All right, seven o'clock. We will call to order the Village of Oxford Planning Commission meeting on this day, Tuesday, June seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven P. M. Let us repice the favor of caps to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, a roll call please.
Starler?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Goldstar?
Here, Gastor.
Gastor. Hyalak?
Here.
And Schultz?
Here.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, June seventeen?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda tonight, June seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have approved the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five?
Just one quick comment. It doesn't need to change the minutes, but I wasn't here the last meeting. I didn't get the packet, so that's been cleared out. So it wasn't unexcused, and I just didn't think we had meetings.
Okay.
So.
Thanks.
Good comment. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence? All public. Assuming no one in the audience, we can now move to our new business. Have a couple items here to discuss this evening. First, on the agenda is the election of officers. So for the two thousand and twenty-five calendar year, we need to elect a chairperson, a vice chair, and a secretary. Moving backwards, if you will, from right to left, I'd like to make a motion to elect Vicki Hoff as the secretary.
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote?
I have Schultz, right?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Hyalak?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
And Goldstar, right?
Yes, Gastor.
Gastor, I'm going to get a right.
All right, Vicki, congratulations. Can I get a motion for the vice chair?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Justin Ballard as vice chair.
I will second. Vicki, can we do another roll call vote when you are ready?
All right. Flynn?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hyalak?
Yes.
Galldorf?
Yes.
And Ballard?
Yes.
Justin, congratulations. Thank you. Last but not least, we are seeking a motion for the chairperson.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Scott Flynn as chairperson of the planning commission.
Just there a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready, a roll call vote, please.
Gastor?
Yes.
Hyalak?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
My bad.
Yes.
Okay. Andrew. I'm ready to go for the next six months. Moving on to the annual report. Mario, I believe you helped draft up a report for two thousand and twenty-four, which also includes a session on the action plan draft. So if you would, please walk us through what you've prepared as summary.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. This is the annual report that we submit to council to summarize the activities of the past year. So we list the various meetings we've had based on the applications we've received. So we had eight meetings in two thousand and twenty-four. We do summarize for them in case they forgot who's on the planning commission, so the membership there. And then we just go over the various applications and site plans that were approved previously. So we did have not only the Coffee Big B on Twenty Church get their approval, but also Chuck Schneider's twelve-unit apartment building did receive an approval, as well as a planning commission approval for the Menos of Oxford, the townhomes, their various sign. And then the other main crux of the activity of planning commission last year was several signed design reviews for businesses within the downtown. So that basically summarizes for them. And then we also did tackle the landscape ordinance, looking at that to try and shore that up to be more in sync with what the actions we've normally done during site plan review, just to point out those highlights we normally did, put those in the ordinance. So then, in addition to that annual report, we can't, the planning commission could identify an action plan, communicate to the council the topic areas you'd like to see considered the remainder of this year, I guess, and moving on to the next year. And so really, in front of you is just the draft text from the previous version. And mainly, it's just talking about, once again, if there's any ordinance within regulation, within the zoning ordinance, I should say, that the county, the planning commission feels needs to be addressed in terms of possible amendments to, that's something that could be tackled. That's, you know, one of the, while it might seem basic, it's one of the primary tenants of the planning commission to make sure to update those ordinances as, you know, development occurs in the village. And then also, training for members is something, you know, it's good to remind the council. It'd be nice to get the latest and greatest information from these different councils, resources out there for the planning commission. So that's pretty much the report. And any changes, you can see, I can make those prior to your consideration of sending it to council.
Thanks, Mario. Any comments or questions for Mario from the commission?
All right.
Oh, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Certainly, there was a clear theme on the site design reviews or some consistency which aligns with one of the agenda items this evening. What I would like to do is make a motion to present the two thousand and twenty-four annual report along with the two thousand and twenty-five action plan draft to the village council with one amendment, to specify in the proposed action plan, item one, zoning ordinance reviews. Let's specify the sign ordinance amendment as a primary or specific focus in two thousand and twenty-five for awareness at the village council level. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Schultz. And?
Any discussion? I thought I saw a hand down there.
I think I'm saying second.
I'll second that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Ballard?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hyalak?
Yes.
Galldorf?
Yes.
Fina?
Yes. Great, thank you very much, Mario. But your work's not done this evening, so.
Not quite yet.
That moves us to the draft review of the assigned ordinance amendment. Walk us through what you reviewed for discussion.
Yes. So as we've talked about, a lot of, over the course of time, we've seen a lot of sign reviews, and we've come into a pattern of dealing with the issues that are brought up by the internal illuminated signs within the downtown. So at your direction, there's a draft language in front of you to amend that section about internally illuminated signs in the C-one core and C-one transition to specify what we've been typically, what the planning commission has typically been requiring as a condition of approvals, mainly that all these signs should be installed with a photo sensor, an automatic dimmer, so that way their light levels can be controlled and specify that life level as a hundred candela when they're from dusk till dawn. And then also, I took the liberty of trying to promote, to make a recommendation on design style, and mainly to deal with the illumination and deal with a configuration that would result in a more bright sun. Basically, a lot of times, we had box signs that had a white background with dark letters that causes more light transmission, a lot more glare. So just B-two in this draft, in the blue underline, is just suggesting people would utilize the backgrounds as a darker color, not to specify the color, but darker color, still allow them to have creativity, but then focus on letting the light transmit through any kind of text or logo they might have. So it's just a suggestion, and I wasn't sure how much more we wanted to get into it. I do have it written currently as stating that the, and it might sound a little odd, but you never know, it might happen, allowing, number one, the applicant could choose to request a formal review by the planning commission for their sign, or the zoning administrator can request, first, they can request these signed design, signed applications be reviewed by either staff or myself or the village consultant to determine compliance, and then, but then the zoning administrator has the final discretion as to whether requiring these applications to be submitted to planning commission or for design review or not. So the zoning administrator, in this case, that dual hat is worn by the village manager, and it would be their determination as to consistent, whether to, based on, based on whatever detail of the application they feel it might be necessary, just run it by planning commission or not. So that's the way it's set up currently. Once again, I know we talked about this maybe about a year ago, maybe about trying to just make it all completely administratively run, so it's up to you. This gives them the discretion going, coming here or not based on the zoning administrator, but it's up to you whether, to modify that structure, to always require them to come to planning commission.
Mr. Chairman, may I, before we delve into it, to focus based on some of that as well, reading through this, for one, it's like you mentioned, leaning toward maybe a permissive approval administratively, but there's still some gray areas there, so I'm not sure if that's what I want to be the sole partner of, right? For instance, in the C-one core, I think every internally illuminated sign that's come to the planning commission, they've always said, we want to see channel cut letters. And that's, you know, if you want your sign permitted, here's what we're going to request of you, and I think everyone has always complied with that. But it's kind of arbitrary, and, you know, it's nice when people are making arbitrary decisions that you wish, but it's arbitrary sometimes, and I don't know if we should somehow quantify that to some degree, especially in the C-one core, that is kind of a given that most everyone has stuck with. Down further, when we've done the box signs, that seems fine, just have your speed traffic, you've got a center trim lane, maybe. So it would be nice if I had to solidify it a little more. And I remember when we were doing the moving place, the one, the old State Farm place, on like one hundred cells or one ten cells, something like that, the last interval in sign you did, and they did switch it to the darker background of white letters, kind of how you described. I believe the sign installer was here, and one of the issues we always talked about is the dimmable fixtures and stuff. I think that the tubes are not dimmable, I remember him saying that, there were certain things are not dimmable. And so we, we're the standard, we say that it must be, but in some cases, it can't be. So it's a little bit of a gray area still. And I just, if we could dial it in a little better, maybe, or just recognize those differences. You know, the LED signs, of course, are all dimmable, and I remember him saying that that night, that some of those tube fixtures are not dimmable.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, and I do believe that, so that's one aspect of this draft, is that it would be imposing on all the businesses. It would direct their options towards LED signs and LED illumination. The tube signs, probably, most likely, I don't know if there's a fact, but most likely, they're probably less expensive, and so it would. But that's probably because they don't have as much, they don't have the capability as other ones. So, you know, we've been requiring the dimmable all the time, and I'm not sure if we've ever come across that, other than the one time you mentioned, Joe, that that was an issue. But it's just, that would be an effect of, if we went with this language in front of you tonight, then people would be then basically forced to go up to LED signs for that situation in the C-one core and transition. And I agree with Joe that, you know, there is a lot of permissive and leave, a lot of interpretation grant given to the zoning administrator in the way this is written. Some other ways to do that is just to take that power back and keep it with planning commission, just so that way, it's a deliberation amongst individuals. Another way could be, in theory, you could put in, I could put in some text about the criteria that someone might have to reach, but that still is a means of interpretation. They'd have different criteria. The zoning administrator would like look at three or four different things, aspects of a design. But I guess the thing about it is that design is pretty subjective, it's not. So it's something that, it's up to you guys whether you want it. I was just curious in terms of, and I, you know, I guess the other reason I put it this way is I wasn't sure if we've gotten any blowback or if people have felt that, like, the requirement was too onerous. It doesn't seem like it, but I don't know, it ebbs and flows all the time with people that, when they get ornery or not. It makes them upset.
I do have a question. So I have like two questions. One of the questions is, one of the reasons why we were doing it, and one of the things that we always have concern is, is that sign being too bright, and they could be turned down if it is too bright, right? That's one of the major concerns that we have with changing the language or being able to have control with this ordinance. Have we had anybody complain with any of the new signs that we've had? No. So we've had no complaints there. It kind of like, that also goes hand in hand, like, the next thing is, the technology or the mechanisms or how the signs are built, I'm not a sign expert. I'm just only going back off of what being, what I'm being told, you know, from Mario and some of the requirements that we have, if we're asking for a dimmer, and then the expert will come in, the sign gentleman says, you know, sometimes that doesn't make sense, and that doesn't. So, so I guess what I'm kind of trying to say is, is that how do we put the language in there with not knowing the technology and how it might change, or the mechanisms of how a sign might be built will change, but we still have that control over the brightness of the sign?
Don't we have the ability or the technology?
Yep.
Is fair. Don't we have in writing here, there is the ability for the applicant to request sign approval from the planning commission as well as the zoning administrator? So if the applicant, using the subject matter expert of the sign developer, says, hey, I can't use a dimmer here, then the applicant says, I want this application to go to the planning commission. That gives them the ability to bring it to our attention. There's a thought.
Yeah, and it doesn't solve the problem, it just makes it even more aware, right? That, okay, like the box sign, that Fozzie, whatever it was, in the, whatever down there, one ten, I believe if you drive by that sign, it probably does not dim at all, because what he talked about that evening and how it's not. But again, down there and using it, they're reversible, basically the leg letters and dark background, it's noticeable. If you stuck to all of the channel letters and then the backlit or halo backlit ones, those are always LED, and I think those are always dimmable. So for the main core downtown, I think they're always going to be in good shape there if you say, we want channel cut letters, and we know those design or the backlit. Those designs all become LED dimmable options, so they should be, those can be pretty easily, yep, check, 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 they're approved, right? It's the other ones that I was like, oh, this guy down here, and it's a box sign.
Then do we need to define or specify or create a definition of box sign versus channel cut?
I would love to see something like, if the feeling of, did not watch them the last few years, it seems to be in the C-one core, you know, from Dennisup E Street, or the Strokel buildings in downtown, the deal is, I think each one of those always though, cave blocks, the carbon glass, all those, said, you know what, merrill, merrill, that they all were approved based on the desire to have a channel cut or backlit. And so therefore, they can comply with the dimmable part. So if we wrote in internally illuminated signs in the C-one core, bust the channel letter or backlit, then it makes it easier for them to comply with the other part, which we're more concerned of in the downtown with brightness.
And I also believe that by specifying channel cut in the downtown core, we're also clearly communicating what our expectations are. I think that's fair and reasonable, too, so people aren't bringing sign designs that aren't going to be.
Right.
Are going to work.
If you say, look, yeah, we're open to them, as long as you're A, B, and C, you know, channel cut, channel cut backlit, or, you know, and the dimmable portion, and they can, those, I would feel comfortable with doing administratively, because they're already, I know they're already language goals and past practice, what it is about that.
Okay.
So by simply looking, adding that part above the C-one core, different standard. But yeah, farther down, by the car wash, and all those, the box that signs, you know, try to minimize brightness by the backgrounds, the reversing of it.
In some cases, we've had the input from the DDA of the city.
Yeah, I think because of ordinance, it does say, so if a sign or site plan, something the DDA, they're always supposed to at least give an opinion.
Right.
And that was since last, a lot of times, looking, oh, you guys have asked about some time.
Yep, yep. Just, should that be incorporated, reference to or subject to DDA?
Here's the thing, what would you say if they, someone else said, now we don't like that? We'd like to see something different, now we didn't get to go back to that again and say, well, show us something now, the planning commission kind of already has approved these types, and they've kind of, it's gone all cookie cutter, so they give it to admin for approval, not someone here who can trump it because of color scheme or something.
Right, we're trying to automate, automate this so we can bypass any, like.
Red tape.
Right, any red tape, so.
To make it go through smoother, because we want to be business friendly at the same time.
Right, right. Sure. Chances of the DDA come back and just say, I just hate this, you guys. I doubt that's happening, because it seems like people, especially in the downtown, they have recognized where they're acting, this kind of, getting nice looking sign.
Okay.
Well, has the DDA ever disagreed with? I mean, I'm just trying to, just trying to think, why wouldn't we want their input? I mean, it's a.
So I think we want their input for like this part, like the writing of it, but not like the day, the day on day, like items, like, and I think that they, like, that it has been their input, is that they want the channel cut, the channel cut signage, so we have their input now, putting it into action, removing red tape.
Kind of like, what kind of comment? As the business owner who's putting up a sign, his sign, he wants to make the sign as most attractable as possible, right? He's a business that wants to attract people, so he's not going to have a sign that is, that's not, if it is, you know, the community would be like, oh, could make comments on it, and then that affects the business in general. So I think in some ways, the business owner will try to make it aesthetically as pleasing as possible because he wants patrons to come in. So it's almost like the, the design itself is, we have to do less of, of, what an aesthetically pleasing sign, because the business owner will do it for us.
Yeah.
So I think it might be a moot point to worry about the DDA kind of saying, hey, this sign will be, should be reviewed.
The, and you hit on something, Justin, and I, I mean, there's always two sides of the coin. I agree with you, I mean, as a business owner, they're going to want to make it look nice. You know, to me, something that looks nice might be black background with hot pink letter. And that, you know, for me, that might be really nice. For the downtown area, that may not be so nice. So I, I'm not, I understand cutting red tape and giving things through, but, you know, I think, I think there needs to be, I personally would like to have it come to the planning commission. You know, fifty years ago, when I was on the planning commission, there were a lot of signs that came that actually, there was a lot of work that went into it, a lot of signs that didn't get approved, and understandably, why? Because of exactly what I was talking about. They came with either the style of the lettering, the color of the lettering, the size of the sign. I saw a lot of the planning commission getting some great feedback on, and especially in the core area, because, you know, that's, you know, obviously, the, you know, we want the aesthetics, you know, it's the, you know, the heart of our, of our community. So that's just from previous experience, I think that's where out there we should go.
I would add, though, that the zoning administrator has the option to have the discretion to require any application be submitted to the planning commission. So if there was a hot pink sign, I imagine you would say, hmm.
I'm going to bump that one.
Yeah, I don't want to do this on my own.
And I, what does your current matter, you know, consultation with the DDA is just what we do on a day-to-day basis, anyhow, so, I mean, if I say, this is, you know, when you guys take it, if they just, if this, that looks great, then it'd make me feel better that, okay, going for something that's subtle and nice, gaudy and crazy. A perfect example was four, five years ago, where Rod Charles is like, they close up, that cell phone repair place.
No.
When that first went in there, we had some feedback. You know, some of it was from some of the old town folks that went on here forty years ago, and I just thought, ah, it was bright green, but it was channel cut, bright green, it was broken apart, you could see like white to the crack areas, and it did pop, and I was a little concerned by that.
Concerned that it was too bright?
Yeah.
So that gets back to the point of.
Well, too gaudy.
Right.
More so, I think, I think the style of it was, again.
That's a sort of.
I may have to say it.
It's a sort of.
I related to you.
Okay.
Okay. It comes down to what I'm hearing, if I may, is the, not necessarily the planning commission, but the community's willingness to trust the subjectivity of the zoning administrator, right? Now, if things were to go sideways, in a sense that the subjectivity of the zoning administrator who has approved a sign request or permit, and then there's feedback that gets relayed to this office that says, what was the community thinking approving this sign? Then we'll have a discussion whether it's us or somebody within the village.
Is that horse down the bar at that point?
What was that?
The horse is down the bar at that point.
That would have been.
You don't finish up, right? But again, I'm, I'm a pretty conservative guy, I understand what's going on, but I'm not going to be here forever either, right? I like to see some, I like to see some classic signs, you know, I'm not this either. I like creative, I love the sign you get approved.
But to your point, you're not going to be here forever, right?
But then.
But still, style and color and all that stuff is all subjective. You might like it, somebody else might not, and just because if somebody else doesn't like it, doesn't mean that it shouldn't be up, or they shouldn't have the right to put it up, like the crack signs, for example. Some didn't like it, some liked it. Thing is, it's still fit within the rules of what they had, is it has to be this size, and it has to be within this brightness and with this thing, and as long as it fits within those parameters, should be what we go in. Regardless if you like it or you don't like it, it's kind of like, once again, as well as somebody else, like, on your property, you know, and so I think it's, I think it's, you know, it gets back to just trying to, of all the, the whole time that I have been on the planning commission, we would always see the exact same things, and we always approved it on the exact same conditions, which were, what's the, the lighting? Because all the rest of the parameters of it, the square footage, was always in place, that was always, all those things were always in that. It was just the terminology of the lighting and the dimmer switch, I think those two things. And other than that, it went by super quick, and they had to wait weeks longer than they probably should have if it was just administratively put in the office.
I will say.
Sorry.
That's what I wanted to go after as well, is that, like, that time is money, time is money, and we want people to invest, and if they can make money out of a few extra beats, I think that some people might choose Oxford that might not have otherwise.
Mario?
Two things. One, when it comes to sign companies, in my experience, they seem to be very efficient, because a lot of times in my communities, the sign company, the sign contractors, the first because a lot of times in my communities, the sign company, the sign contractors, the first one through the door, before even the applicant or the business is through the door, they've gone and talked to their sign company, and they're ready to install a sign, even when the, the community hasn't even heard of this business coming in, it's like, wait, what are you talking? So, uh, while I do agree, and the point of this is to try and make it more efficient and maybe, like, have someone not wait for that time, it's all part of the applicant themselves, so they, they put their ducks in a certain row and they have that sign contractor lined up. The sign will be on the building before they open. I don't think, it sounds like we haven't current, current encountered anything in which a business is like, I need this sign open, uh, up in, in, in two days because I'm going to have a grand opening. Well, then that's, you know, a little bit more of a management issue, but that's just a, a frame of reference, I don't always, I don't believe sign, lack of sign is usually a fault of the process, per se. But then the next thing, to go back to it, while I, I agree that putting in the ordinance, you know, having, you know, very specific criteria, and if that's met, it's approved, that is, that is generally always the, the best approach. But the planning commission does have discretion, and, and one aspect of that discretion is can be designed, usually, uh, you usually, we've been, in the past, we've been hanging our hat on other aspects of a design that might cause it to be negative. Like, for example, the gaudiness, while that sign might have been gaudy, glare was the issue that we pointed out to them as the, because of the characteristic and the style of that. One other aspect to consider, that, that you do, like, like I mentioned, you do have the, some design, uh, pr- uh, ability and, and means of influence, because, and, and so one other way, though, you could look at it is, if there was other signs that you, that, if the, if the board started to switch another way, if wanted to go and say, advertise more historic factors of, of things. Sometimes that can be something that can be considered, oh, in the C one core, based on the building itself, we'd like to see this style and design of a, of a building, if you wanted to do that. The, the commission in this case hasn't, they, we've gone the other way, which personally, I, I mean, not personally, but just the, you've gone away in which you've, you've selected design and styles, and we've been fortunate, everybody's picking styles and design, that is, I say, I think emphasizes and complements the historic character of downtown. It doesn't clash with the historic character, it makes it, it updates it, it makes it more modern and, and makes it more attractive. So we've been, you know, we've kind of been fortunate that way the applicants come in. So while I agree, you probably don't need to, you always want to try and be objective, you do have options if you wanted to have that. Leave the door open for some design subjectivity by, by a group of people, not just one person, but a group of people.
Thanks, Mario. I have a question, either for you and or Justin. The root cause of this, of this whole dialogue is based on a theme, and at some point, there is a decision made to incorporate a condition of sign approval to have installed photometric sensor. What triggered that? Was that a, call it industry benchmark, or what was common across other communities and municipalities? Why was that even brought up as a condition to begin with? Or was it?
Yeah, well, from, from an industry or zoning standpoint, historically, sign regulations are an attempt to allow creativity, but also make sure that the si- signs don't become hazardous, and in this case, the glare is the issue. And a lot of, you know, back in the day, things used to move, it used to have, you know, things on top of roof and, and, you know, flashing lights and strobes and everything. Those have all gone away because in the end, basically, we know businesses left to their own devices, it'll be, you know, escalation, like this. Someone has a five-foot gorilla, the next one's going to have a ten-foot gorilla, or something. So that's why the, the parameters are created, and in this case, it's about the glare.
And a lot of that, from what I remember, is that it was always part of, you know, part of your packet, and it was part of the recommendation you put in every one of the signs, and so that became a common theme with, with.
But what, but why? Why did we make that recommendation? It's based on more or less safety?
Yes.
And not so much tribal knowledge, but.
And also, and also an attempt to be objective, be objective, and they like, glare is the issue, I don't, whatever the design, the font chosen, or the characteristic, or the composition of it, I was trying to just leave, leave the subjectivity to the planning commission interpretation and focus on, like you said, the safety and glare and that sort of thing.
And it's defined that the one hundred candela per square meter is the maximum level for, we'll say, glare or safety of drivers, especially in a roadway similar to.
And actually, it's also intended to allow for legibility, to make sure the lights, the business, the sign still functions, and it can be easily led, uh, legible because we want the signs to be legible, we want the businesses to succeed. So that's why you want to make sure, allow them to function and not be glaring.
And historically, in the ordinance, there's always been, and commercial people, and commercial businesses or properties, like the layer trespass issue, right? If you remember when Brit Financial came a couple of years ago, they were looking to have one themselves that on Enstee, but it was residential cross, and we kind of talked with them to meet with that, and they said, forget it, let's just leave our one on the front, to the face of the commercial corridor. And so there's always been, always been some kind of restriction on how bright the light would be, in relation to neighboring properties, especially residential stuff. And just near my home on N fifteen, I'm signing one up to place a year ago, and you can go in there and change your settings on the sign, so at certain times of night, you have a photo light, it'll follow that, it'll dim automatically, you know, things like that. Well, theirs wasn't set like that. During the day, it looks great, and right by night, I think it's so bright, you couldn't read it, you couldn't, you know, you also said it was like the sun. And, but you couldn't read it because it was so bright at night, like your car, when you turn that thing, the radio dance, right, because they're next, you don't need it right in your face. Because like Tamara said, it, it's more legible then, too.
Scott, and then not to be dead horse, but one other example that, that I can't think of, and it's not the downtown area, it's, you know, the White Houses, you know, where, where Chuck's, I mean, those signs, I mean, you have no idea what businesses are in there. Now, that was approved, at, at the time, the village had an administrative position, that those types of things went through. And that person, you know, approved it, and that's where I was kind of getting back to, and, and Joe, I'm not saying you have a bad case, but, you know, if, if you leave, you know, if, if you leave it up to, to, to one person and their subjectivity, that's where you could get in a, in, you know, end of a, a mess. And, and where, where if you have a, at the planning commission level, I mean, we have the guidelines, we have a committee that's, you know, that's, that's review of itself, that's, like I said, I don't want to be dead horse, but just.
And Mr. Chair, so, and I'm comfortable with the process, I'm not pushing back on it, but I'll get you wrong, I just want to know that, that's where it could lead to, and, and if, if somebody came to be, and they're proposing something, I think it's just kind of crazy, that's, you know, let's take it, but for the, the run-of-the-mill, the ones that I've been watching you guys approve and things like that, again, it saves time, saves money, it means you guys have been having a vote on it on Thursday, July, or whatever, or Tuesday, July, for approving a sign that was a standout, that's what I think goal.
That's, that's a whole, that's a whole point in.
And I think that's reasonable.
Yep, and from my experience of being on the planning commission, that has been all of them.
Yeah.
And that's part of this, so, that's part of the reason why it's been years now.
So, and that's a good goal for that purpose, again. And I'm comfortable with that.
And I would hope that a new zoning administrator, when you decide you're going to move on, retire to Hawaii or wherever, would get some orientation and have, you know, that, waiting to be someone coming in blind and just starting to approve signs without having some background.
Anybody comes after me, people have experience, people on planning commissions, but I'm for years, you might come from planning commission, some other community, you come here, you've already dealt with signs over the years, too, so, I think there's always going to be. So we.
So, so I'm like, I'm personally, like, I am good with the, uh, the B one and B two, and also to allow us to give us the administrator the ability to send it to planning commission, should, like, I think that's like a, like a backstop for us with some of Schultz's concerns, and that gives us that ability to still have control of that sign, should we need to.
I'm also in agreement with the language as proposed, with maybe one minor amendment to B two, where it says box signs shall utilize, could we consider that to be a recommendation? It is recommended that box signs utilize backgrounds X, Y, and Z. Integrate some additional, not so much ambiguity, but subjectivity, that there is a directional recommendation, that the sign should follow this base design criteria. Otherwise, I'm in agreement with the most language as is.
What about inserting language about the channel cut letters that we were just talking about?
Where?
There was the, there was a suggestion that the, basically separating them out a little bit and saying, in the C one core, channel cut letters, wall sign, internally illuminated wall signs shall be comprised of channel cut letters. And then in C one transition, an applicant may utilize channel cut letters or box signs or that sort of thing. I could separate that out, so like, have different standards per district, if you prefer.
Or, or recommendations based on those two different districts.
Right, could be recommendation, yeah, it doesn't have to be shall, if you wanted to go with recommendation. Yeah.
CJ, final comments?
Yeah, I, I think that might be nice to have them, them split up. The, that there are, there are differences between there and if we can, the more that we can just make, make it like really clear and cut what we're looking for at each level, so that it can get auto-approved by the businesses, I think that'll just, or by, by the zoning manager.
Yeah, we need to define our recommendation or suggestions in order to then adhere to B, I'm not sure if that's B B or B three, the final comment regarding administrative approval. At this point.
Yep, above that, I have a typo correct as well, too, number A five, we have C O, C one, multi-story obstacle building in the C O, we don't have a C O or anymore?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So let's get that out of there. But yes, to, to your point about the difference between the C one core and C one transition, C one core, it ends at Enstee, there are dentists in there, there aren't any rooms, they're all fronting and right up to the right of way, right, there is no therefore a alignment sign. So therefore, they're always like the wall sign, so therefore the channel cuts work. As you had south, the dentists south, and everything else, predominantly, they're going to, they're, people want to see the alignment sign, so therefore it's more chances going to be a box sign. Some will have a protruding sign or a wall sign, perhaps options too, but yeah, the, the only option they pretty much have in that one core is a wall sign, so.
Yeah, but we want to be able to, like, eventually, maybe expand the C one core, for example, say, we have some houses down the way, and maybe they're, the building is front-facing yet, you know, we want it to be in the future.
Yeah, but, but again, I think, by having that option, the alignment sign, the box sign down there makes sense, and a lot of times, that's what they're going for, just can't do it with the C one core.
So in order to progress forward, there, there is a request for Mario to add some additional language. I would suggest as a recommendation, but to differentiate C one core versus C one transition, and possibly then the box sign versus channel cut. Now, do we need a motion in order to execute or close and have that recommendation?
He's got to just recommend, yeah.
Yep.
I, I think the only thing is, do you guys want to see that final fact, we pass the, the zoning amendment?
I'm, I'm counsel, based on thirty minutes of dialogue here, that we should review the amendments one more time.
Well, you do still have to have a public hearing, too, before you can.
A lot of times it goes to council, then they'll do, they do the first hearing, first reading, and then they'll get some comments, and then set the public hearing at the next one, because they have to do it twice.
I think you're more talking about, we review the, we review your next draft.
Right.
Then from there, we start.
Yeah.
Yeah, council will do it twice anyways, first meeting, second meeting, so that's when the public hearing will take place, but in the meantime, you guys get it how you want it.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, yep, yep.
Good. Then with that, I believe we've defined our next steps on the sign ordinance amendment, and we can proceed accordingly.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Forgive me, but it's not, it's, there's amendment that I'd like to toss out to you, a request, I should say, from the downtown, because this is, they can currently have a temporary banner for thirty days, and by the time they pay the permit fee, the application gets like eighty-five bucks. There's been a request, but, but based on town, is there any way to extend that, or maybe could be two months? I mean, some, it's an upstairs business, they kind of struggle and stuff, and so I, all I said to them was, I will just bring it to the planning commission next Saturday evening, it's been a while. Do you guys have any thoughts on that? Because for them to pay eighty-five, then eighty-five the next month, there isn't anything in there that said you can't do it month after month after month. Right, we have a couple that do, and he has plenty, they have one side of the building, they come in and they'll pay it, and they'll pay it again the next month, so sooner or later, it gets to a point where you pay that over and over again. There's something in the ordinance, I think, every year, because of the permanent sign, they have to develop permanent sign regulations, but.
So currently, a business owner can apply for a thirty-day banner, vinyl or whatever material, temporary banner, that's valid for thirty days. That goes through a separate review and approval process that is entirely administrative.
Correct.
After thirty days, they then must reapply, and they pay the eighty-five dollar fee, and that can continue on for twelve consecutive months.
Yeah. There's a section in there that talks about temporary signage, so mostly, it kind of alludes to like for sale, stuff like that, too, but it's, so that for twelve months, a sign becomes, is deemed a permanent sign, must comply with the regular sign order to that point.
So in a worst-case scenario, we have, we collectively as a community, not the commission, has to deal with or see a temporary sign for up to twelve months, in which case then it would be removed because it's all aren't complying.
They could remove it once, or, I think, though. Something to think about.
Yeah, I, I have some.
My ideas, I, I don't know, I just.
So Joe, are you asking for that thirty days to be extended to sixty days?
That's what this gentleman was asking me, is there any way, because I'm struggling, or goodbye, kind of forty, five, or one, 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 one. And, without, you know, putting it out there, it's a second story business, and there aren't a lot of them, retail.
The co- the counterargument is.
We could say, okay, you can have it six, and then you have to be down for sixty days before you can have another. That kind of strikes the other side of the coin, where I'm going to have a, a temporary, eighty-five month for twelve months. So there's, there's two sides of the coin to deal with, one is too short, and this has been, and one of them is too long, I think, in our opinion.
Right.
So are we opening up for discussion about it right now, or?
Well, it's not really an agenda.
I just want to bring it up, toss it off for future consideration.
Yeah, it could be in a future.
And Mario's, Mario's heard it now from me, and you guys have heard it now, so maybe there's something in the future, we can maybe have a, in, in an additional possible amendment to sign words.
Yeah, as it relates to the sign ordinance amendment, I would like to make a request for Mario to maybe benchmark or consider amended language on the temporary sign verbiage in our current ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you, that's, that's really what I, all I have to do to accomplish tonight.
Yeah. Okay, um, let's move on, old business. There is a empty planning commission seat with the resignation of Mr. Knoll. Joe, at this point, we are seeking, or is the council going to make a recommendation? How do we proceed to address this?
The council president needs to receive an application, and then that application, she made a recommendation to the council to appoint the person, but we have no applications.
For the com- for this planning commission.
For the planning commission, see that John Knoll did, sir.
Joe, not from council, let me clarify that.
Yeah, we will have a, a council that'll have to be taken care of, yes, as Marines. Resignation was accepted last month, we have thirty days, but we don't have any application for that either.
Okay. Does anyone on the planning commission have a lead or?
There's, so, like, our application's on our website, like, it goes out, sent to myself, the representative council president, emails on the website, all those appointments are done to the council president, and then those are made to council.
Don't we need two, don't we need somebody from, so we need somebody from village council, but don't we also have to have a representative from township?
Don't have to, that's a, a necessity that we do. Yes, and, and here's the thing, when, when John Knoll became unelected last November, that's what Jack Hurst says, well, we're going to appoint so-and-so to take over John, I think that's not how it works. State statute says, when you're a plan, it's a planning question, you have a three-year term, they don't care who you're in the township or the village or wherever, you have a three-year term. The only difference in that is if you're the executive, and it's by your position, which is like council member, is on there as an executive member, because they represent the council to hear, their term coincides with their term of office, so they can. So they could come in in November of twenty-four, be there for term of November twenty-eight, because that's their term of office. Everybody else has a three-year term, no matter what. So when John council, John Knoll became unelected, he was still on the planning question, because he wasn't there in any official, ex officio capacity, it was just a necessity to the township to say, you know, if you have something, because we're allowed to have someone else out of our, that's a non-elector, on the planning question. You're not required to, but you're allowed to. He filled that non-elector position, and we defer to the township, they could appoint anybody from the township, it could be just a resident, but they had to be someone from their board. They choose someone from their board on a planning question, which brings some experience. But and technically, even though John resigned, state statute says you were on there until your replacement shows up. Now, he's always resigned, and he's out of state family stuff he's dealing with, so he's not showing up. But as far as state statute is concerned, he is still on here until his replacement is appointed.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be from them, but I'd like to reach out to Jack again to see if they want to, if they have someone, they could probably be happy to fill in that position for us. But it was kind of in limbo at first because John Knoll was elected, so he didn't and then, yes, he resigned.
So we're, I mean, fundamentally, we're operating in a gray area.
Yeah, I mean, it it's always been. But we allow township, because they overlap, we were all township presidents in law, right? So that would be, hey, what do you guys have, you guys want to list someone on here?
I was on township for a while, I don't remember.
So I could reach out to Jack again for that one, because I think initially, they were gonna maybe replace John with somebody else, but then it wasn't, it was kind of gray. I need to go back to clarify with Jack, I bet if I go back to clarify with him, John's now at least, you can't, they couldn't remove him from it, replace him, but now that he's offered his eleven resignation, they could appoint somebody else. Or recommend Kelly, Kelly appoint somebody else, that would be doing, they're not pointing, they would recommend. Before the name.
Sure. Then I'll see if I can recruit, like, such drive soldiers. We'll go from there.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, and that, to your point, though, the township might like that seat again, I'll actually check them in first.
Yep. Seems fair. Agenda item discussed. No need for a motion to close that, open dialogue, we understand where we where we sit. Okay, public comment? There is none. Consulted, any administrative comments, Mario, anything?
Nope, no other comments, I just think.
From administration?
Um, I just want to say, you know, Hampton Block has been issued their demo permit.
Yay.
I convinced the DDA, gave it a seventy-five hundred dollar grant to help them. And they were having to receive that, if you all know, it's their day of instruction, right, around east of town here, there's the local owners, and they've been, we have no idea what the plan is, we know it's it's own multifamily, two of the three parcels, this little parcel that flags out on Broadway, although that's still state no ten residential. But they have met, I know with Jim Scher, a few times, and what are we gonna do, what can we do, what's it gonna look like? We have no idea yet, but we did issue the demo plan, I think, early last week. They're supposed to let us know when they're getting ready to knock it down, so someone can get some pictures. But they're excited about getting at least knocked down and leveled out and looking nice this year. Secondly, eighteen South Washington, which is the old party shop, which's been closed for a long time, before Mario got here, twenty seventeen, it's been closed. They're getting more serious with their demolition plan. I spoke to their devil contractor, a pretty good size company out of the morning, I think it was. I told them what we'd be, we have serious plans for our building, we should look over. Because there's concern about the shared walls, shared basement, the green building at twenty-four, investing all, things like that. But it sounds like they're deep ready to be closed. They sent me over the architect, said, you know, what's it gonna look like when they rebuild, I'm like, that's great, we're getting this building out. Then the South Washington Triangle, the conditional zoning you guys did last September, they've got a few roadblocks, and I think some of its financing, some of it's, we're trying to work, work with, we've met with them earlier, what, a month or so ago, Mario, about some plans. We had a little issue engineering with their retention pond and stuff like that. They're trying to, they're gonna need to extend water sewer from Lincoln Street down the back, that mechanic can come in. They were hoping to maybe do that work over the summer, but they didn't realize all of it takes the eagle to issue rate. Water main extension permit, that's four to five months. They still click along. They're learning some things as they go.
You said the Hampton Block building is listed as multifamily?
The property, yes.
Yes, yep.
And if you look at our website, we have our our master plan, there's a future elevator plans, I think there are, there's that desk building, Near East Village Plan. You'll see what was laid out there, Mario's predecessor, Chris Corey, was part of that. Now, that incorporated the narrow property right away between the post office and Hampton Block in there, fifty foot. That plan in there incorporated that site into two, but now that's separate owners. Um, I've talked to the owners of the narrow fifty-foot property, which does flag out a little behind the side of the post office, uh, probably there. They really need to give us and get, find a way to work that and get that to those guys, so we can go and get parcel. I'm hoping that they will.
Good, good updates, thanks, Joe.
So we have, like, on that corner, there are some businesses on the other.
CJ, call, uh, I think it's called to order. Let's wait until we get to commissioner comments, that's fine. If there's nothing else on consultant admin from the Oxford Township Planning Commission, ZBA or DDA, do you have any updates?
There have been no ZBA meetings, which is means good for us, we're not running across a fault. Yep. DDA is still working on their crosswalk, uh, street state plan there, east and west verdict, um, M that's still cause a recall, we saw it coming, I saw it coming, that about putting this crosswalks too close to the intersection of M twenty-four. And they have jurisdiction over that turning radius and things like that, so that's caused a bump in that plan. But then they also have outbid right now, they have a placebo refurbishment project, and it's outbid, good to do the thirtieth, you know, here in office, to totally redo the all railing and decking and stuff like that, and to add an eighty-eight ramp to kind of and the way it decided, I was pretty pleased, because I thought that was gonna look horrible, add eighty-eight ramp on there. Architect laid it out, it's gonna look nice, so hopefully that'll be a decent price for them, and that'll be that done yet, after the council partner done.
Excellent. Good. All right, now, commissioner comments, I think there is one.
So so on that, across from the Hampton Block, there, there's gonna be, um, like, on that corner there, we've got some shelves there, there's like a, it's like a dog, dog treats shelf, and.
That's kind of all glass, because.
Is it glass?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not a digger's across, but yeah, I know we have.
In that area, we have established, established shelves there. I would love to see, to see if there's any possibility of having like some C one zoning in that direction, see if we can start densifying out a bit, just a little bit, and working, working to see if we can have some multi, multi-use shops on the bottom, housing on top, and see if there's any possibility of that. I know, I know the DDA has, has that there's been discussions in there about, about trying to expand down the downtown, down the verdict, verdict street, and I think it'd be a shame to miss out on this opportunity to at least discuss it before, before whatever is thrown out there as milk.
Thanks, CJ. Maybe a follow-up, just to close that. Is that a planning commission topic or a?
Yeah, what are your master plan and your zoning ordinance, a master plan review, right, but then.
Yep.
So the Hampton Block property is in the DDA. But then there's four to five houses, I think, of glass, which is all single-family residential. And then that property's over on the east side, that you referenced, the dog treats, and that one has been quite in compliance with the ordinance, let's just leave it at that.
Okay.
Um, but again, that's the orders I have to deal with, right, it is ordinances and master plans and future fellow plans change over time, and those considerations are all taken at that time, what you all want to look like, and the community wants to feel like.
Then we'll add those comments into the meeting minutes. Anything else from the commissioners?
No.
Okay, good. Well, then, at eight P M sharp, we will, oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion, is there a motion to?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.